The League of Women Voters always welcomes new members. If you support civility in politics, support the in-depth examination of issues, support advocacy following consensus building, and you are 16 or older, then the League may be just right for you. You will find League information on the table at the back of this room, or join at our website. Thanks to our question screeners tonight, Laura Peterson and Mark Cota. Thank you Nancy Hansen for greeting, and Tony Reed. Thanks to our forum coordinator Rose Kelly, and to both Mary Cota and William Todd Mancias for being our timekeepers tonight. Risa Johnson of the Chico Enterprise Record is participating with us and will participate in the questions. Our moderators are Carol Burr and Jane Wander, both past presidents of the League of Women Voters. Please silence your cellphones. We ask that you hold all applause until the close of our forum. No portion of this forum may be recorded for campaign purposes. Our forums are always issue-oriented, and we ask that there be no personal attacks, either in a question or in response to a question. And now, to our moderators.
Good evening, and welcome to this League of Women Voters Forum for candidates seeking a position on the Oroville City Council. The Oroville City Council is elected by the citizens of Oroville, which now has a population of 18,700 people, to guide the public policy affairs of the community. The council is composed of seven members, including the mayor, who are elected at large. The mayor and all elected council members serve a four-year term. Municipal elections are held in November every two years, on even-numbered years, and new councillors are sworn in on the first Tuesday in January. City Council appoints the city administrator and department heads, city attorney, and city commission committee members. The council also served as commissioners for the Oroville Successor Agency. Council meetings are open to the public and occur on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. Agendas are posted online. Council members receive a $400 per month stipend, and up to $10 per month if other regular meetings are attended. Additionally, the city offers medical, dental, and vision insurance to the council members and their dependents. There are three vacancies for 11 positions. Incumbents David Pittman, Alfred Jones, and Phil Chan Wilcox. In addition, Janet Goodson, Linda Draper, Barbara Bunker, Al Simpson, Sue Vang, Scott Thompson, Mark Grover, and Clay Hemstock, who is not able to be with us tonight. So, some ground rules, which we've already begun to hear. The candidates have drawn two numbers, one to determine the order of their opening statement and one to determine the order of their closing statement. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening, one minute to respond to each question, and one minute for a closing statement. All candidates will have an opportunity to answer each question, but if you agree with a candidate who's already spoken, you might want to just say "I agree," that way we can get more questions asked and answered. The press, the League, and the audience will present questions, and I'm very happy that Risa Johnson from the Chico Enterprise Record and the Oroville Mercury Record is here to represent the press. We encourage those in the audience to use the cards available from the League staffers to submit a question. Please raise your hand if you need a card, and someone will come and give you a card. Where is that person who's going to come and give you a card? I think I see one coming. Okay. When you have written your question, raise your hand, and someone will come by and pick it up and bring it up to the question screeners over here. As Margaret mentioned, we do want the questions to be questions that all of the candidates can answer, and that are not either for or against a particular candidate. We're really trying to get to know the candidates tonight. Okay. Because this forum is nonpartisan, and we want everybody who's here to kind of have a better sense of how to vote. I noticed that the ballots have already, for those of you who are getting ballots by mail, they started to come out on Monday. So, we are moving right along here. So, at any rate, we're not here to do anything. With applause, would you hold it till the end? And that way, we can just thank everyone for participating, and we do appreciate the candidates doing this. All right. So, we'll begin with an open...
How about the timers?
Oh, yes. Okay. The timers were introduced.
Were they?
Yes, they were.
You showed your signs?
Yep.
I missed it.
Yep. No, no, they're here. And they're mean. So, if you go over a minute, this is not going to be like the presidential debates, it's going to be different. At any rate, we'll begin with an opening statement by Barbara Bunker.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you folks doing this forum. My name is Barbara Sherry Bunker. I usually go by Sherry. Long story. Anyway, I would like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I appreciate all of you that have taken the time out of your day. I would like to ask at this time that I could be your voice on the city council. I would be honored to do that. One of the things that I want to do when I get in is to make sure that we increase our public safety. Without public safety, we can't bring in the new jobs, we can't bring in the manufacturers and the businesses. We need to increase those items to make it a community that thrives. We need to bring in new and innovative technologies and ideas. We need to have the ability to increase our tourism. Thank you.
I've only lived in Oroville for 30 years. It seems longer. My family history goes back here to 1924. So, I have almost a century of family history in this town. I love it here. We chose to live here. We did not have to live here. My students were always a little bit surprised, and would ask me, "Well, Mrs. Draper, don't you live in Chico?" And I'd say, "No, I live in Oroville, and I want to live in Oroville." This is what we chose. Kirk and I have raised our five children here, and they went to schools here and did very well in their fields. And just a little background, I got involved with Save Oroville Trees, which led me to get involved with a committee called LOWER, Lower Oroville Water Rates, along with four other committees. I personally collected about 300 signatures so far for our petition, and I hope that I'll have a chance to say more.
My name is Mark Grover. I'm running for Oroville City Council, I guess that's why I'm up here. Grover, I just want to mention tonight that when you go home tonight, tomorrow, and you watch our national debate for elections, we don't have much of a say in the state of California regarding where our delegates go. I think we all pretty much know. But in Oroville, you do have a choice. There's 11 solid candidates, well, there's 10 up here, but we have 11 solid candidates, and I would respectfully ask for your vote. My platform is public safety, management, and business and fiscal responsibility. We have a city budget that is well over $1 million in the red, and we need some business sense to help straighten this out. We also have a low morale in our public safety, and I'm here to help. Thank you. Good job with the signs.
Good evening. My name is Scott Thompson. I'm running for city council. I just want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. I want to thank all the moderators and the League of Women Voters. Just a little factoid for you tonight. The League of Women Voters used to be the ones who facilitated the presidential debates, and I say we go back to that. What about you guys? What a circus out there. I promised Mark that I wasn't going to jab him tonight, but I think I already did a tiny bit. But anyway, my name is Scott Thompson. I am a pastor, pastor at River of Life Church here in Oroville. I'm also a father and an entrepreneur, started my own business, and understand what it takes to get something going, especially in the state of California, how difficult it is to run a business in the state. And so, definitely, if I get voted, I'll be an advocate for business. My goals are regarding our business, obviously, anything, it's family values, family safety, anything for kids, the next generation, also for public safety, because if we know of public safety, then we don't have, businesses and families can't thrive, and as well for fiscal responsibility. So, vote Scott Thompson tonight when you get your ballot, or anytime between now and November 8th.
My name is Al Simpson. I want to thank the League, number one, for having this event. This is good. This is be my third term that I'm running for the city council, and as I said in the paper this morning, if everybody read the paper, I don't want to leave nothing on the table. I realize we've got a deficit, and I want to work on it, which we are right now, working on it real hard. And, number one, take care of that first. But always remember, public safety is the main issue, number one. And also, South Side, I want to welcome that to the city. I lived in South Side for 45 years before I moved into the city of Oroville, and we never did quite make it to the city limits then. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Phil Chan Wilcox, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Oroville. I'm the fourth generation of my family to live here, and my great-grandparents came, or great-grandfather came in the late 1860s. I also raised three children. My two sons are in law enforcement. They happen to both live in Reno at this time, and so, I am definitely an advocate for public safety. My daughter is an IT person for the FAA, and also works out of Reno. I have served on the planning commission for this city for 17 and a half years, and this is the end of my second term, and like Mr. Simpson, there are things that are still on the table that I would like to make sure are taken care of. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I, as well, would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Janet Goodson, and I am, as well, running for a city council seat in November. Prior to coming to Oroville back in 2009, I lived in Sacramento, where I worked for the Department of Justice in the Peace Officer Standards and Training Division. Shortly thereafter, I worked for Department of Corrections, and subsequently, my unit merged to the Board of Prison Terms. When I came to Oroville, I fell in love with the natural waterways and many of the natural assets that are available in Oroville. But quite some time ago, I realized that in order to create change, to cause change in this city, that the face of the city council was going to have to change. As your councillor, I will work to ensure that our public safety departments operate at an optimum level of performance.
Good evening. My name is Sue Vang. I lived in Oroville for 14 years. I am running for city council to balance the budget, to support business, and support public safety. I have a degree in mechanical engineer, and also concentration in accounting. Thank you.
I am Alfred Jones III. I am thankful that you all have this forum, so that we can sit here and tell you about ourselves, and I love talking about myself, so this is great for me. I am from San Diego, California. I moved up to Butte County, to Miguelia as a firefighter, then found Chico, thought, wow, this is like a cool little city. And then, I found Oroville after I met a young lady at Butte College, where I'm an alumni from. I got married, had three children, lived in Germany for a small spell, and then lived in the city, still live in the city. Well, I lived in the county, so I lived on the south side of Oroville and lived there ever since. Sitting there, I was sitting there going, one day, hmm, a lot of things need to change. The reason why you have more crime is, is when you have mental health issues, homelessness, and poverty, those are the reasons, the main criminal elements of why you have more crime. So, if we attack those things, I think, as well as increasing our police force, since we've now incorporated the South Side, I think then we'll get a bigger balance on fixing what our city really needs in the first aspect. Another aspect that we really need to fix is, is making sure that our elderly and our youth start mingling together. Thank you.
My name's Dave Pittman, and I've served on the council for two terms. I welcome you all to come here tonight. I hope that you all get some information and enjoy this evening. I also look to you as stewards of our community, for without you and your vote, we really can't get anything done in this town. I have served with the idea of innovation, efficient and effective government, and I've made all my decisions based upon five major principles, that being public safety, number one, quality of life, business retention for our businesses, business recruitment, and then open communication and open dialogue for all the council activities. My background is public safety. I've served in the fire department for many years, over three decades, actually, and I really look to see citizen safety and security improved in our community. I hope to have Oroville be the place that we all call home. Thank you.
This mic has its personality. Thank you very much for your opening statements. We're going to ask Risa Johnson to ask the first question.
Ms. Draper, we'll start with you. How do you think the annexation of South Oroville has gone so far, and what are the most pressing things in the area to be addressed, in your opinion?
Well, it's only been about a year at this point. There are a lot of things that need to be addressed. They certainly need sidewalks, curbs. They need cleanup in South Side. They have many buildings that are burnt down and still half-standing. So, we need to actually do code enforcement, try to keep things where the people there feel like they're part of the city, because they are now. So, we need to welcome them in and do all we can to make their area livable and safe, and that they feel that they're as important to us as the rest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grover?
Thank you. I don't think it's gone well at all. I don't think the South Oroville has changed much. I don't think it's been a vast improvement by annexing into the city. I think it's long overdue. South Oroville needs to be part of Oroville, but the way it was negotiated, I think it was negotiated poorly. I am under the understanding that the county, Butte County, really wanted South Oroville to be annexed into the city, and they're willing to pay quite a bit. And we, as negotiators, felt to do our part, and we didn't negotiate long-term police protection, fire protection. It could have continued for a long time, because Butte County wanted this to happen. And I wanted it to happen too, but I think we missed out on an opportunity, and I believe now we're short-staffed on the whole situation, and it seems like their leadership may be a little overwhelmed, because I don't see a big change at this stage.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Thompson?
When you annex in a large section of land like we have so far, to answer the question directly, the annexation of South, how do I think it's going so far, and the most pressing issues? When you do a large-scale annexation like we have, and like Oroville will continue to do, there are a lot of issues that can't be solved overnight. And so, I know it's easy just kind of to take a look at it and see that in a short period of time, there's not much has changed, but I do know that the city is doing all it can with a small budget. And so, honestly, my desire as Oroville continues to annex, is my desire is that we continue to annex in areas that are all one happy city, is that as they do that, each city, each part that comes in doesn't see itself as kind of, I know the South Oroville's been neglected for a long time. There's been a lot of entities that have come in and done a lot of volunteer work in cleaning up the streets. I know 10 years ago, South Oroville was a lot different than it is now. I do believe that it has increased just by the volunteer work, but there's a lot of work to be done, and we're just beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Annex in South Oroville. Number one, there's no problem with the fire service, believe me. They have got good fire service out in South Side. They've had for many years. That is not a problem. And as far as code enforcement, our code enforcement is working hard to clean the area up. The problem is, you don't demand, like they do downtown, that you clean it up within two days, three days, or whatever. You give them more time, because it is a new program. So, it's a work in progress. The thing of it is, South Side needs more police protection. We need to bore cops out there, as well as downtown, and this is why we've got to find some way to fund more police. Whatever that answer is, I'd be glad to sit and listen, but right now, I have no idea, budget-wise, how to do it.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilcox?
The annexation of the South Oroville area, has it affected the city? Definitely. We weren't totally prepared, even though we agreed to the annexation, and there should have been more agreements made with the county as to who was going to take care of what and when. The priority in the South Side area is public safety, and I know that there's been some issues amongst some small groups, but our police chief and fire chief has done a lot to work with the community to address those issues, and we need to continue making that a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodson?
The question was in regards to annexation improvements. I live in South Oroville, so I personally have a hands-on experience as to the blight, as to the abandoned buildings, burned-out buildings, the drug use, the need for safety improvements in that community. I have worked with city and county officials. Once annexation came into fruition, we planned a community cleanup. I'm sure many of you are aware of that. It was originally supposed to be for one day. It extended to a whole week. There was approximately 12 tons of debris that was removed. I am working with city and county officials as code enforcement now to continue that effort, so that once again, South Oroville can be revitalized and empowered, and be the community that it is made to be.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vang?
South Oroville improvement, a little improvement is, I think we need sidewalk, burning buildings, and street light. I think we need to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I live right there on Dean Spencer, but don't tell nobody. And I think that an increased police presence is only going to cause criminals to just come out when they know the police aren't around. So, I think that what needs to really happen is, is we need to have more community involvement in the South Side, as far as the people who live there. And the more we could go out, like I do already, and walk the South Side, and talk to people, and try to find out what's the real need that people need and stuff like that, and then find the resources to help them not have those mental health issues that causes them to go towards drugs and alcohol and things like that, then I think we are looking at the solution. I'm always about the solution to why we need more police. I'm not saying we don't need more police, I'm just saying I'm always looking at the solution, because you can add a police officer for every two people, and you're still going to have crime if you don't go after the solution why. So, if we don't attack the mental health that is happening on the South Side with all of the people that can't get medicine and stuff, and the drug use, then the crime just continues. So, we need to attack those things first.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman?
Thank you. I never said the annexation of South Side was going to be easy. It's hard. It's one of the most difficult areas that you could find in any city, but we took it on, and I supported it from day one, because we've had 50 years of neglect by the county. So, to start with, we've got to get the first thing going, is the street curb gutter sidewalk. Everyone in that area has the decency to have a decent place to go out to your car, park your car, go to school, not have to go through a mud puddle. We need to improve the unsafe structures just need to be eliminated. One of the first steps, I'd say, is suggest a no-fee for a demolition of a structure that's unsafe. First off, I know we have about 50 to 60 in the area that we've identified on an inventory sheet. We've got to start working on that day by day, and there's another tool that might be useful for us, the CREA Redevelopment Association, or a law that the state has given us. We're investigating that to create some ability for redevelopment funds to work on the street curb and gutter. Thank you.
One of the things that needs to be done is, we do need to increase code enforcement. We need to increase our law enforcement presence. The deal that was struck, was struck right here in this room between Bill Conley and Mayor Dahlmeier, when the agreement to take that annexation effort forward. There were promises that were made that were not kept by the county, and there were statements that were made where the county said, "You're going to have X amount of dollars," and the agreement that was made didn't follow through. We weren't, we didn't get that amount of money to help with the code enforcement, to help with the extra law enforcement. That's part of our problem. That's part of why we're in a budget issue right now. These things have to be addressed. This community has waited long enough to have these things, and it's high time that we brought them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a question from the League, and we'll begin with Mark Grover on this question. What do you see as the top three issues of concern for Oroville?
Public safety, business, environment, and public safety again. And if I can also throw in fiscal responsibility, it's huge. We have mis-prioritized our budget. I can, I'm going to try to do this in 60 seconds, but it's very, very difficult. I looked over the last four years in our budget, 28%, and these are departments, 28%, 32%, 45%, 42%, 28.8%, just in the cost of city council over the last four years. These are the increases. If we look at fire, 7%, 6.8%. If we look at police, over the same period where we got double digits, some of them approaching 50% increase in spending, police department, 0.7% was the increase in spending. So, these are the problems that are facing our city.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
It's a great question. It's amazing how complex some of these questions are with one minute. It makes me talk as fast as we can. But anyway, I think a lot of us would agree on the top issues, and I can name them in no particular order, business, safety, and our fiscal responsibility issues are clearly some of our top three issues. I think that some of the difference might approach for myself in regarding that is a proactive approach, as opposed to a reactive approach, and going after the solution, as opposed to just trying to fill holes and seeing a ship sinking. And so, I'm a go-getter, and I want to see a lot of things take place, and not just throwing money at issues, but going after the source of problems and seeing the city as a whole become a place where our businesses and families can thrive, and not pass that debt on to the next generation.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
The biggest concern I feel with, my concern about Oroville is getting the people downtown, getting the people out and shopping downtown, or shopping anywhere in Oroville. You can't believe probably that people go out uptown to shop. But the thing of it is, it is improving downtown. All you have to do is walk downtown or drive through town, and you can see improvements. So, they're putting the money in it, we just got to get the people out to shop. And the thing of it is, public concern, public safety, yes. Traffic cops, yes, because speeders are everywhere. When you put speed bumps on a street to cut down speeders, then you When you put speed bumps on a street to cut down speeders, then you know you've got a problem. So we just need to work on it. But it's easy to say, "We need public safety." You've got to have the money to buy it. So I think we just need to all get out and strive to
Thank you.
Spend money in Oroville.
Top three issues. Well, number one is public safety, because that's important. Without the public safety, keeping our community safe, then other businesses will not want to come here. Businesses are important. We need to grow the existing ones, and we need to work on bringing new businesses in. And not just big-box businesses, but also small ones, because those are the ones that help the community exist. Community outreach, I, you know, both council member, or former council member Bunker and I, we served on a committee for community outreach. And, you know, we publish it in the paper, we post it around town, and there just is not a way to get the people to come. So with community outreach, I think we need to work on what the community wants and for the community to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodson.
Three. I believe that first, it's fiscal responsibility and a managed and balanced budget. It is the responsibility of the local city government to be good stewards of the city's reserves and the ability to generate revenue. Number two would be public safety. In the past 43 years, Oroville has grown by approximately 10,710 people. And yet, Oroville Police Department has only grown by one additional staff member. Three, empowering local business and attracting new business. Empowering local business, and we also need to reevaluate the city's fees and regulation policies regarding local business. Local business has a voice in the community. It creates jobs. And local business recycles over 50% of the profits back into the community.
Thank you. Mr. Bang.
The top three issue. First, to better budget, we need to better the budget. Second, we need a business. We need to support local business, or bring a small business or big business. And the third is public safety. That's what I plan to do if I elect as a city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
So all of them said good things, so I'll agree with all of those things, and then I'm going to add my three. That way, I don't have to use the same three. I feel that the number-one thing that we need to worry about here in Oroville is the de-beautification of what Oroville really was when I first came up here, and the beauty of it. Adding more sidewalks and more, taking away our natural beauty ends the way the city looks. It ends that beautifulness that you see when you drive into Oroville and you're going up to the lake and stuff. So that is one of our main concerns. Two, we need to go back to when I first came here, and I used to walk down the street, and people would just say hi and hold conversations and stuff. We need to get that back, because that's what made Oroville, and made me love Oroville and want to be here, is how friendly everybody was. And it's like, that's not the same anymore. People are afraid to be outside. And then, three, I think we really need to create a link between our elders and our youth, so that our youth can learn from our elders, so that they don't tend to repeat or go astray, so therefore, we could go better. So I agree with everything everybody said that way, and I added three more.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Pittman.
Thank you. A lot of great ideas in the room, and that's what local government's all about. My three ideas, housing. Our housing inventory is way too low. We just lack, we've got 100 new jobs coming with a new store in town. We don't have 100 new homes for those folks to live here. So we've got to get an emphasis on housing all across the board, not just low, but middle and high-income housing. Even our own hospital, they run buses to Roseville to bring their employees up here every morning. Traffic, or, excuse me, public facilities and park security. We've got to be able to enjoy our parks. We're not going to lose that battle. That battle needs to be that we have comfortable, safe parks. Also, residential security of the neighborhoods, and a customer-positive buying experience is the only way we're going to maintain our businesses. The customer needs to have a positive buying experience. From the time they park their car, they get in the store, they walk out of the store, go to the sidewalk, and get back in their car, that needs to be a very positive experience. It's the only way we're going to draw customers. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker.
Thank you. I think the three issues, first and foremost, would be public safety, fiscal responsibility, and stability, and businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Raper.
I think the three most important things to me are lower water rates, because this affects not just residents, but businesses as well. I talked to a restaurant owner in town last week, and her bill for July was $800. The high water rates are killing our town. And people, a lot of them aren't aware of it, but we've got to do something about that. It's a terrible burden on businesses and residents. Second is our deficit. We've got to be more careful with the taxpayers' money. We also need to lower water rates and address the homeless problem. All these things are going to help, I think, as we can get new businesses here. But they aren't going to want to come with the water rates that we have, with the homeless problem that we have. And also, public safety. We've got the same number of officers, three, and one sergeant on duty at any given time that we had in 1973. We desperately need more police coverage, especially since the population is now about 20,000 with the annexation. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, do you believe the city needs more subsidized and/or low-income housing? And do you think it's the government's responsibility to provide that housing?
Does our city need more subsidized housing? I live in a house that's out in an annexed area of Thermolito. And the house that I live in, the neighborhood that I'm at, has two different programs, which I am a strong, I love, and I'm an advocate for. One is with the USDA, and the other one's the chip homes. And those are great programs, because it allows people who don't necessarily have down payments to move into, who are working-class citizens, people that can, you know, not just looking for a handout, but are willing to put their back to it as well. With USDA, they gave me a great rate to get into a home, which I would have not been able to do otherwise. And so I do believe that we do have some amazing programs. Oroville actually has an amazing first-time homebuyers program. I'm not sure if many people necessarily know about it, but Oroville has already amazing programs. Obviously, we can increase in that, but we do a lot more than a lot of cities do. And I want to give, actually, our late, or our current city council members and those who put that in place, just thank you for doing that, because I wouldn't have a home otherwise. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson.
I think it's time that we start thinking about the people that own their home and paying taxes right now. Anytime that you get money from the government, or money from this source or that source, it's going to cost the homeowner right now. And they can only afford to pay so much taxes. So we've got to take them into consideration. Yes, there is programs for low-income housing, and, but the thing of it is, the first time, like you said, first-time homeowners, great program. All you have to do is go down and see if you qualify. It's a very good program to get into. But it just, we've got to think of the taxpayers, really. I mean, it's, they can only pay so much, and they're hurting. They're hurting in Oroville.
Ms. Wilcox.
I'm going to say I'm for subsidized housing, and also, I'm against subsidized housing from two points of view. And actually, someone came to me today and said, "I'm against subsidized housing, because they compete against the property that I already have." But then, on the other hand, I believe that the city needs to help people get into homes. Like the others have said, our first-time homebuyers program is a great program. It helps people to get into their homes. And they don't have to repay us until they sell their homes. So like I said, as long as they stay in the home, it's a benefit to them and to our community.
Ms. Goodson.
Thank you. Yes, I am definitely in favor for subsidized housing, and also in favor for affordable housing. Yes, I am also aware of the first-time homeowner-buyer program, especially for those who have recently been annexed into the city. We have approximately, excuse me, 36% of our population lives below poverty level. Single-family homes is needful, and affordable housing is also an issue here. I believe that we need single-provisor households for veterans and for those that their income is government-funded as well.
Thank you. Mr. Bang.
I assure, I agree, Southside housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Well, do I agree with subsidized housing? I'm one of those people who, I make just enough money not to qualify for anything. So, yeah, I agree with people who make less than me, and I only work part-time. So I agree that people who don't qualify, or qualifies for subsidized housing should get the help. However, I do feel that we need to have more regulation on how those houses are being used, what's going on inside of those houses and stuff like that. Because a lot of the times, what happens is, is you get one person subsidized, gets inside of the house, and then all kinds of other activities goes on inside of those houses. So we need to make sure that if the government, if our local government is going to say, "Hey, we'll help you get into this house," however, our code enforcement or our such-and-such will be coming in and just making sure that that house is being used the right way and the proper way and things like that. So yes, I'm for it, as long as there's strict, strict regulations on how those things are going down.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman.
Thank you. It's a great topic to be talking about. I've already said, our housing inventory is just way too low. A good example of that is 60% of our teachers, local government workers, don't live in this community. They live in Chico, Paradise, other, other communities. Why, you ask? Well, they don't have enough housing here. Their toolbox to encourage developers to build houses is very limited by the state of California, so we have to look locally to whatever tools we can put together as our own policy with our own city. One suggestion I'd throw out there for our consideration would be to put a six-month suspension of impact fees for a new project development. So those impact fees wouldn't have to be paid to encourage developers to apply for permits to start building new houses. Another idea I have is suggest a property tax payback, that if you do a new development, you'll, we'll pay back your property taxes you pay for a two-year period. So we can encourage them with some capital ideas, so that entrepreneurs can come here and build more homes. We've got to give a way to build more homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker.
I agree with the affordable income housing, but I also think we need to look at higher-cost housing. We've got, as was stated, we've got the hospital sends down three buses to Roseville every day to bring doctors and people back to work in this hospital. Why are they, why are they going down there? What is so special about Roseville as opposed to Oroville? Personally, I don't, I don't know. I would rather live here. But that's something that we need to look at, and I think maybe the housing issue might be one of those things. We've had the Orange Tree Apartments that came in for the low-income seniors, which I think was, and they're probably going to be shocked, but I think that was a good idea. I fought against it on the council because of certain issues. But all in all, I think it's been a good, good fit for the city. Possibly more like that would be beneficial.
Thank you. Ms. Raper.
Well, we hear people say that we need more housing, we need more upper-income-type housing. And a contractor told me recently that one of the problems that we have here in Oroville with that is that it costs so much for them to build here. For example, there's a $30,000 impact fee that a builder has to pay for every house he builds. Now, if it's a remodel, he doesn't have to pay that fee. So guess what we have most of here in Oroville? Remodels. Yeah. And as far as the subsidized housing, I think that's an excellent thing. It helps a lot of people. It's helped me in my life at one point to get into a home. Lloyd Pendleton was here recently, and he's well-known for his Housing First model. He decreased homelessness by, chronic homeless people in Utah by 91%. And the thing is, to get them into housing, they pay rent, they pay a certain percentage of their income, 30% or $50 each month, whichever is more. And they have SSDI, or Social Security, or they recycle cans to do that. But it's something that can work.
Thank you. Mr. Grover.
Grover.
Mr. Grover.
I agree with Sue. But I will elaborate. If we're talking about just mortgage plans, like Scott got, I think that's great, and I agree that the first time, the city program's wonderful. We have a lot of employees where, at the business I work at, that have taken advantage of that and purchased their first home through the city program. So if that's what we're talking about, is advantageous financing and that type of deal, yeah, there's a lot of programs out there. They're, they're everywhere. So that's always a good thing. As far as just building more low-income housing, if there's demand, the builders will build it. There's federal dollars for that, there's state dollars for that. The builders can make money if there's demand. Why is the hospital running buses? Maybe it's, it's not just the doctors, because they can't find a house. Maybe their family doesn't want to live here, because our police and fire are understaffed, and we don't have a safe town.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask the next question, but first, I want to precede it with a little introduction. It's going to be a very quick yes-no answer from each of you. I don't know if everybody in Oroville is aware of what's going to be on your ballot. In addition to candidates, you're going to have two measures. One's the County Measure L about the cannabis. The other one is a special sales tax, Measure R. And I just thought I'd read the introductory summary, in case some of you aren't aware of what it's about. Measure R will be an ordinance, a temporary sales tax increase of 1%, generating approximately $3.6 million annually, that automatically expires in six years. And it establishes a citizen oversight committee to ensure that the funds are used to preserve public services, such as police protection, fire suppression, vehicle repair and maintenance, finance analyst, and human resources services for the city of Oroville. And you will have a yes-no question on that on your ballot. And now, we're going to ask the candidates, do you prefer a yes or a no on Measure R? And we start this time with Mr. Simpson.
Personally, I have to go with no. Do you explain that?
Yes or no?
No.
Ms. Wilcox.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Goodson?
Yes, with explanation.
Mr. Bang?
Is that Measure R or Measure L?
This is R.
Oh, no.
No.
This is a hard one. I'm going to say maybe. No, I'm going to say yes. A definite yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker?
I don't like the fact that we can't go into an explanation. But I...
Oh, it's painful.
Yes.
I think that was a yes.
I support police and fire, so I vote yes.
All right. Mr. Grover.
I support police and fire. I don't trust the city council with the funds.
Is that a maybe? No, Mr. ...
I'm joking. What's that? Okay. I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Grover, and that falls under fiscal responsibility, being a little more creative with our finances, so, how's that?
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay. There's one sign in Oroville that says, "No on R, come in, ask why." Now, we'll have a chance for you to explain more why. Okay, and we'll start with Ms. Wilcox.
Okay. The reason I am for Measure R is not that we haven't been physically responsible as far as being able to support our, or increase our fire and safety, police officers. We, our chief came up with a program called Municipal Law Enforcement, and they do all the ones that do not actually have to be arrested. They take the reports, they go out into community, into the community to make sure everything is going smoothly. And when we started that program, it was based on grant funding and some excess, additional money that the chief had. And when they And when they became full-time employees, the city had to fund these employees, including all their benefits. So, it caused a deficit because we weren't totally prepared for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson.
It is most unfortunate that we are at this crossroad, whereas the city does not have the ability to sustain its public safety staffing. If elected, I will ensure that the approximately $3.5 million generated from that one percent sales tax, that revenue will be utilized for its intended purpose. And the annexation brought in approximately 3,000 additional people into the city. Currently, the sheriff shares that responsibility, which will go away in approximately two and a half years. And unfortunately, we just don't, do not have that coverage from Oroville Police Department. And this is my reason for advocating for Measure R.
Thank you, Mr. Vang.
I will say no, because I'm trying to support local business. If we increase tax, the tax is, could be eight-point-five, compared to Chico is only seven-point-five, compared to Paradise only eight percent. And Oroville, our food supply is also, is like ten percent higher than Chico. So, if we increase the tax, our cost is going up. The reason a lot of people is not living in Oroville because the cost of living is high, because that is not, this is a variable cost, it's not a fixed cost. A fixed cost, they cannot, they could spare some money for the fiscal, but the variable cost is hard to control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
So, why I said maybe first is because I feel that increasing a tax to just help the police and the fire, you miss out on what I've been saying all along, the mental health issues, the homelessness and the poverty. So, I'm for the one percent increase if it was actually written to say, half would go to police, fire and updating that, and half would go to address the concerns and the reasons why we have to have more police officers and stuff. So, I am for it for now, as far as the way it's written, because of how it's written. But I do believe that if you just go after trying to find a solution without going after the problem, you're never going to fix the problem, therefore, you're just going to have to, in four years, five years, or however we grow, you're just going to have to add more police officers. So, you just keep adding more, but you're not fixing the solution. So, we need to address the problem itself, not just keep trying to add extra up here. And I'm not against us having more police officers, I'm just saying we need to go after the root of the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Pittman.
Obviously, yes, R. The council has done its homework over the last few years in terms of alternatives to police and fire and other services. And I got to tell you, the city hall is at bare bones. If you say you want to put more on police, fire with the current budget, you'll have to close city hall, because we're at one-to-one people in serving many of the departments. So, the real issue here is, we haven't had a general revenue stream increase in the city of Oroville in over two decades, and the time has come. When you talk about law enforcement at that level of 1974, that's terrible. We need to have more, and it's you people that need to make that decision. What kind of a community do you want to have? And certainly, we're going to put it for police and fire, and if any one of our council members don't vote that way, recall them, get them out of there. Even if I vote the wrong way, recall me, because that's what you're all about, making sure we keep our promises to you.
Thank you, Ms. Bunker.
My problem with this is that it should have been written as a special tax. They didn't want to do that because it takes two-thirds majority to pass it. I think had it been written as a special tax where it said that only, that money will only be used, I think it would have, would have passed anyway. I understand the need for it, I totally support law enforcement, public safety, that's my I believe if I'm elected to council, I will guarantee you that that money will be spent for what it is supposed to be spent for if it passes. And if it's not, I will be leading the fight to whoever votes against it to get them off the council.
Thank you, Ms. Draper.
Well, I think we have to put this into perspective. One percent tax would be a penny on a dollar, a dime on $10. They estimate it'll cost each of us about $110 a year. I would donate that much to get nine more police officers and five more firefighters, four MLEs, a dispatcher and a human resource person, these are needs. The good news is that we're going to have help with that, because every tourist that comes to town to go bass fishing or up on the lake, they're going to be buying goods, things here in town, and they will also be paying that tax and contributing to that. The other good thing is, it's going to expire in six years, it would have to be voted on again to be put back in place. And there will be an oversight committee that will have citizens on it so that they will be accountable. And I can tell you, if I'm elected, I will never vote for that money to go to anything other than police and fire, period.
Thank you, Mr. Grover.
This is a bit of a challenge. I will be out there working with police and fire because they do need additional funding, and I'm going to help them if that's what they need. There is a recall election this November 8th. There's three incumbents that are up for reelection. So, the city is in a crisis situation, and if the voters elect to pass this additional one percent, you're adding one percent to seven-point-two-five, so it's more than just, it's more than just a penny a dollar. You're adding quite a bit to the tax, and it's going to generate about three and a half million dollars a year. So, the question is, are we going to give the same staff, the same leadership, this money? Who's going to watch over the money? A citizens oversight committee is going to watch over it. Well, who's watching over the regular budget? Are we going to fill the voids with this money that the voters approved for an enhancement to our police and fire? Are we going to fill the voids in the current budget? Are we going to fix our budget with your enhanced sales tax?
Thank you.
Very difficult.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Thompson.
I really appreciate the opportunity to explain my answer, because this is a very emotional answer for me, because one of my main platforms is public safety, and the argument does not go, if you vote yes, you support public safety, and if you vote no, then you do not support public safety. That is an invalid argument, because number one, let me put some topics in there. Number, I would be very much a proponent, a supporter and an advocate for a point-five percent sales tax increase. I believe it's more of meeting in the middle of the road to get the city to really hunker down on their budget, but also, it would be a fixed five-point, not a, six years from now, we're in a worst-case scenario where we've hired more police officers, so now you're going to fire them, or you're going to increase that more. So, I think it's six-year, one percent is a bad, bad for business. Number two is, we have new business moving to town with Walmart, with the new franchises, with downtown growing, and so I believe that as Oroville grows, that we will get more money in our system in a proper way.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, I said, I said I was against Measure R. I'm not against per se Measure R. Public safety needs a raise, I know that, it's just how it's worded. Public safety is a example of its own. I mean, it's got to be worded word, this money cannot be used anywhere else. I mean, I get the drift from everybody up here, yes. You know, the present council would probably not look at it. Well, they're wrong. We all feel the same way. It's the wording of the ballot. So, this is why I'm against R. Public safety needs the money. Granted, they need the money, and when I talk to people on the street, I leave it up to them. Hey, this is your choice. It's your choice, you're the one that's going to be paying that extra penny. So, vote your feelings.
Thank you. A question from the audience deals with this controversy about water rates, and apparently there is a citizen group, a lower Oroville water, circulating a petition to look into getting lower rates. What is your position on the water rate controversy? And we'll start with Ms. Goodson.
Currently, the, there are three water districts in Oroville, two of which their rates are The high water rate affects approximately 3,600 residents and businesses. I am on that committee, I am a co-founder, and the intent is to find measurable ways and a viable solution to address the high exorbitant water rates specifically for businesses. This is a situation where it is not an attractable, it is not attractive to new business coming into town. It needs to be addressed, and I just believe that we need to pursue it, and it's just the right thing to do. Several months ago, I did speak at the PUC, the Utility Commission, against the high water rates, and I will continue to advocate for that and work with community leaders and those that can make this change.
Thank you, Mr. Vang.
I also, the committee of low water rate, the water rate in Oroville is 2.64 dollar per 100, I mean, per one CCF, is like 748 gallons of water. Compared to Chico is only 1.5, $1.57. And compared to South Feather is only 42 cents. And the cost is too high for us. It had to be more compatible with Thermolito, South Feather and Oro. And I was, the committee of the low water, and I fight for that, for the city of rising of those 360, I mean, 3,600 people that use Cal Water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We pay too much on water, because I'm on Cal Water, and I lived in Chico and I paid a lot less than what I paid living in Oroville. I work in Chico and live here, because I believe Oroville's a more beautiful city, I believe that Oroville is actually safer than it is in Chico. I think there's way better people here in Oroville, as far as when I'm doing my walks or just sitting around talking to people at the local coffee shops and stuff. I believe that Cal Water is a semi-racketeering company, because they actually own the water, they just buy it from someone else and then charge you a lot more. So, I mean, I look at all of the little water districts around us, and then I look at, whenever I go down home to San Diego to visit my mom, how beautiful the water looks coming from Oroville down there, and think, wow, look at how everybody's grass is green there, yet up here, we have to budget our resources for water to have green grass. So, I am for lowering our water rates, however, we have to do it, let's kick Cal Water out of our area.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Thank you. The city of Oroville happens to have three water providers, that being Thermolito Sewer Water and then South Feather Water and Power, those are two water districts, and then California Water Company, which is a private company. That company is regulated by the PUC. So, as a city, a representative of the city of Oroville, I have to represent everyone in the city of Oroville. There are about 3,600 customers in the California water system. That agency is regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. Our leverage is with that commission, and many of us did testify, I testified at the recent hearing, and my issue was, it's unfair for our business community that uses water for their production to compete to the other cities in the immediate area when their water rates are extremely high here and cheaper there. It's very unfair. And it looks like the PUC did listen to us, and I understand there's an agreement that there may not be any water rates in Cal Water's increase in the next two or three years, but that's just a big, that's a first step in the right direction, and we certainly have to deal with PUC on that issue.
Thank you, Ms. Bunker.
The water rates in, for Cal Water in Oroville are just outrageous, and we've, when I was on the council, there were hearings, we went to, we filed suits, we did a lot of things, and their bottom line is to their stockholder. If they don't make money for their stockholder, then they're in trouble. We have the cheapest water in the nation with South Feather, we have the highest water in the nation with Cal Water. Somewhere, there's got to be an in-between. There's absolutely no reason for Cal Water to have their prices where they're at. It's just greed, plain and simple greed.
Thank you, Ms. Draper.
Well, I'm also a founding member of lower, lower Oroville water rates, and we've been working on this issue for several months. I also spoke at the CPUC hearing in April in Chico and told them how I had four of my grandchildren here to visit last summer for four weeks. They didn't even shower every day because they were swimming, and our water bill was $450, and I'm not kidding, because they only allow us enough for two, and we cut back long before 2013. So, we went over and we got socked with fines. But I've been going door-to-door, talked to about 300 people, got signatures, and each of those individuals, I can tell you, is furious with Cal Water. Okay, this is a huge issue in our town, whether the people that don't have Cal Water get it or not. And to give you an example of the difference, if you have Cal Water, your bill would be $77. For the same amount of money with South Feather, you would pay $17. So, it's a big, big difference for low-income people.
Thank you, Mr. Grover.
Thank you. I'm going to try to solve the problems in 60 seconds. We have a public utility commission in Sacramento that controls water rates. We have companies, we do have, there's definitely something fishy in the water in Oroville, guarantee that. When they petition for a rate hike, the city, the city leaders, the city attorneys have an opportunity to petition to be part of the process, to have a seat at the table. In 2012, the city asked for that and was granted that, but nobody showed up. In 2015, the city did not petition to be part of the process. If you're part of the process, you can see all the filings. I've actually done my homework on this. I've talked to the public utility commission in Sacramento. What is the leadership doing for you, or what are they not doing for you? I mean, everyone's angry about it, but who's helping you? I'll be down there, I'll be in Sacramento, I will help you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, excuse me.
One minute definitely is not sufficient to answer this question. Wow. So, I have met with both the president of South Feather, the district manager for Cal Water, Jack Kiteley, I believe is his name for, Kylie, who's done a lot of homework regarding Cal Water. Number one, I want to say, no matter what the city voters, city citizens decide, I'm not afraid of taking on Cal Water. I want to say that publicly. Number two is, I want to make sure that if the city decides to do that, that we don't do it blindly and not understanding the cost of doing so, because there's more at stake than just basically buying out or trying to wipe out the company. There's a lot of litigation possibly that's at stake, that we must come to grasp with the terms, that in reality, if the city does take that on, it's a good possibility that we're right back with all the litigation fees and the prices that we will be paying. I know people have a lot of ideas that it's not going to be like that, but I have talked to a lot of businesses, and sadly, you know, the reality is, I know people have kind of exacerbated this, especially with how close we are with South Feather, but with all the business that I've talked to, very few, if any, have said that that is an issue for them, by the way.
Thank you, now, Mr. Simpson.
To begin with, you cannot compare Cal Water's rates to South Feather. There is no way, because South Feather has their electricity bill. I mean, that's what brings their water down. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, Oroville City got screwed when the dam was built. We got nothing from the state. We got nothing. The county got 20,000-some-odd acres of water out of that dam. The city of Oroville got nothing, and we got a river going right through the town. We got a diversion dam, we got a diversion lake. Oroville got nothing. So, yes, the rates are high, but I don't know if we can afford to buy Cal Water, believe me.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox.
I'm a Cal Water rate payer, and so naturally, you know, I would like to see their rates lower. I attended the PUC meeting in Chico along with some other people in this room, and we all voiced our concerns. And it has to be, go through the PUC, like Mr. Pittman said, and unfortunately, the feedback we got... And unfortunately, the, the feedback we got was that they would not, how do you say, make a decision to reduce the rates at this point in time.
Thank you. Next question will come from Riza.
Mr. Bang, currently, the deficit sits at just about $1 million. How do you think the city got here, and what do you think you would have done differently as a counselor?
Well, basically, my background is also engineer and accounting. You have to balance the budget. You have to know what you, what's the expect, what's the revenue that you have. So, basically, you have to know exactly what is coming and what is going. So, that way, you can balance your budget. And all the thing is, is in business, we, we need to promote business, most business is generate revenue, which is increase our revenue in the city. But what I see in City of Orville is more like abandoned business, a lot of business move out of town, run out of business. I also run out of business. I have business in downtown, I'm not making money, so I closed my business in downtown, I mean, in Fifth Street, and behind Mitchell, behind DMV, because it's not enough people to support my business. So, I basically, I want to see is, see if we have more, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Well, when, when you have bills, and you pay your bills, and you have money coming in, and you balance your own budget in your house, you have to go and do that anywhere else you go. So, how do we get in a, in a debt? We spent money we obviously didn't have, because that's how you go backwards, when, you know, you use credit. So, you never use that. So, I'm not blaming any persons. I'm saying, as a whole, if you don't want to go negative, you only spend what you have. And you always try to have something to save. That's what I was taught when I was a kid by my grandfather. So, that's what I do in my life. What would I do differently? Well, if we don't have it, we shouldn't be spending it. So, I'm all for everybody wanting to have sidewalks, but sidewalks cost money. What's wrong with walking on dirt for a while until we have some more money? So, what I would do differently is, 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 I'm not going to go and spend any money unless it's really warranted on any projects, until we have our local businesses booming, and we're bringing in more money first. I think that's what we need to look at first.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman.
The budget has been affected by the State of California in many different ways. A good example, the tool of redevelopment agency, that took $6 million away from the City of Orville. Every year, we had $6 million that we had to use and utilize. So, that's gone. And then the other tools, the state has taken away from us. So, we're in a situation now, we're talking about next fiscal year's budget is what we're deficit issue is. We can't run the way we are running currently from this upcoming July and on. So, we've got to fix a structural imbalance. We are not borrowing money to pay bills. We have money, we have cash. We actually have enough cash to run the city for three months if some disaster occurs. So, we are fiscally prudent. The difficulty is, is we've been hit with a lot of expenses, and we've got to trim things down. We've taken a lot of steps now. I think when we get the short analysis, we're pretty close to achieving a balanced budget. But we have to move it forward and talk to our units, talk to all our costs and expenses. It's a tough thing to do, but we'll get it done.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker.
In 2013, 14, we had a balanced budget, and I don't know what happened to it after that. It just, it went away. Part of the problem that they had is they now had to show the PERS liability in the budget, which is a big number, because that's the, the money that the employees get when they retire. So, that had to be shown. There were expenses. We have a tendency in this town to do studies that cost several hundred thousand dollars. And we do a lot of studies. We have a lot of stuff that's stacked on the, in the, in the halls at City Hall that we're never going to do. And these are all cost money. I think that's part of what we need to do to stop doing the studies. Look at what we've already done, use what we've got done, and move on from there.
Thank you. Ms. Draper.
Well, I've been looking at the budget back to, like, 2010. And with this current one, these are some things that have affected it really negatively. One is the loss of a SAFER grant that paid for four firemen, and it expired last month. That was $285,000. Also, the annexation brought in less tax money than they had anticipated it would. So, it's a hit of like $500,000 to $1 million. So, there's our deficit. In addition to that, we have $200,000 a year for six years, because it's a smoothing-out period for Cal PERS. So, that's going to get better, but in the meantime, we have to pay. So, what we can do in the meantime is, there's a place outside town that used to be a biomass facility, and we could put solar panels on that. We wouldn't have a PG&E bill for the city, which I'm sure is huge. Their Cal Water bills are over 100 grand a year. So, there are things we can do to mitigate the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Grover.
It's a failure of leadership. Sorry. The deficit is here because we've mis-prioritized our, our budget to begin with. And we, we haven't placed a priority on our public safety. Our town has not grown, but it hasn't shrunk. I've looked at the budget. Our revenues have been flat for the past six years. It's, it's pretty much the same. There's no new surprises in there. We've just spent it incorrectly. And we, we have an opportunity to make a change. And you, you can't run, I, I've been in business in Orville for 26 years. You, you can't run a business into a deficit mode and then ask the working people to take a 20% pay cut. It, we need change. Trust me on this one. We need change. You can't go out to our first responders and say, cut 20%. We need you to fix this situation. It's up to our leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
2020 hindsight is, mine is really good. The, for me, it really does come down to kind of a simple concept. The government, our city was tempted with outside federal grants that expired. And so, that's why, back to my issue with Measure R, and regarding temporary money. In my, in my opinion, for a budget, temporary money is bad money. It gets you in a worse situation than you start off with. And so, we accepted the grants, we're in a worse situation. So, with, again, Measure R, we're going to go right back around the same situation. So, it just comes down to temporary money is bad money. We accepted it, it's over, and now we're in a pickle. And I say we get out of the pickle instead of getting inside of a tighter pickle.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
What would we do different? There's many things that we probably could look at. I, I would say that what we started after this budget was approved in a deficit, we started meeting every other week and cutting. We went through every program we have, started cutting back. That's one way to do it. We should have done it last year. My fault, as well as everybody else. And the PERS, the PERS is a big problem, too. It's a little more than what was said. I got the latest figures. This year, it's going to go $127,000. In six years, it's going to go up $880,000. The state said they would cut it back after six years. Who believes that can jump over a river? I don't think it'd happen, but it could. But the thing of it is, we, we just got to work on it. We've, we've cut, we've cut more than just safety. We've cut public works. That's why you got potholes. We cannot get the potholes covered.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Wilcox.
I alluded earlier to, as to why, you know, we have a deficit, and I don't know if, if the people in the audience are aware that our public safety expense is anywhere from 67% to 70% of our budget. So, the majority of the money spent, you know, from the city coffers goes to public As far as a 20% cut in pay for employees, that is not what we are asking for. We're asking for the heads of the different departments and the supervisors to come up with cuts that amount to a reduction of 20%. And this can be days off, a shorter work week, and we are definitely working at that. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Ms. Goodson.
I believe that the current city council arrived at this crossroad through oversight fee waivers, the cost of PERS benefits, and poor investments. The city has approximately 172 properties, 30 of which are under the Orville Redevelopment Agency. I would like to see a liquidation of some of these properties. It is my understanding that upon liquidation, that these funds will go into the general fund. I would also like to point out that with the annexation, the county study stated that we would get approximately $584,000. But once the debt settled, it brought in $202,000.
Thank you. All right. So, I'm going to ask one more question from the audience, and then we'll have closing statements. So, what is your position on Butte County homeless saturation? And how would you address this issue? And we'll begin with Mr. Jones.
Here we go. So, what tends to happen is, 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 is other areas looks at, where can we dump people and not worry about them? So, what happens is, is you get a young man or young person from, say, Oakland or Sacramento, they come to Butte County visiting, they get in trouble. But when they go to jail and prison, and they get paroled, they get paroled right back here. So, then they're in trouble, and now they're on parole. And then there's no way of them getting out of the situation they're in, so they tend to stay here. And then they continually be here. And then when their mental health issues, everything kicks in, then they become a homeless person in our, in, in our county. Now, let's look at what Chico just did. Chico just took and said, you can't have homeless people sleeping downtown and stuff. So, when that homeless person gets arrested in Chico, they come to the jail here, then they're let out. So, why would you go back to Chico when you know you could get arrested again, when you could just stay in Orville? So, what we need to do is, is make sure that we're creating ways for these homeless people to be educated or whatever, getting their medications and stuff, and redeveloping them back into, into life, so that they can prosper and either become working citizens in our community or go back home.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman.
Thank you. I served on the Coalition, or Continue of Care Homeless Coalition for over three years. I've been educated myself on the problem. The problem is very detailed and unique, but within that homeless population, you have a whole series of different populations. Some are behaviorally challenged, some are truly homeless, and some just choose to be homeless, because they don't like the rules at the emergency shelters, like our rescue mission here in town. They don't want to go there because they have to follow the rules. Those are the problems that we have. I look forward to better housing, or some kind of housing that the gentleman from Utah suggested the other night. We'll have to look at his program and see if we can implement aspects of that here. I like the idea. It's a, it's a great idea to get them off the streets and put them in some decent place for them to survive and have their own personal pride. It's a difficult problem. We've got to continue to work on it. It doesn't go away tomorrow, but we're going to have to really struggle and get down the path with the homeless issue.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker.
Well, this is not an Orville problem or a Butte County problem. This is a nationwide problem, and this is something that I think everybody in this nation needs to take a look at. We've had the gentleman from Utah that came and spoke. We had a meeting right here in this room, and millions and millions of dollars went to Chico, and nothing really here in Orville. We get, we get the jail, so when they arrest them, they're brought here, and they're now our problem. We have, I've spoken with Assemblyman Gallagher and with Senator Nielsen. One of the things that I would like to see is the folks that do have the problems, the, the mental problems and the medical problems. We need to open up those state hospitals again. If we can get that done, that may take a huge portion of the homeless folks off the streets, which would be a big boon for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Draper.
Well, this is not going to be popular, but I'm going to say it anyway. I was at both Lloyd Pendleton presentations, two hours in Chico Monday, and then an hour and a half or so here last Tuesday night. And Mr. Pendleton's process is called Housing First. In Utah, he's decreased homelessness among homeless by 91%. And what they do is, they get funding, first they form a committee that works with everybody in local government and housing agencies and so on. They get funding to get housing built. And these are, this is nice housing. These are not, not ugly. And they start with one group of homeless, like veterans or the chronically homeless, get them into housing, and then get them the services that they need. But this would save us, like, 34 million a year, is what Shasta County has found. Police services, hospital ER services cost them 34 million a year, and I'm sure it's similar here.
Thank you.
So, we've got to do something about it.
Thank you. Mr. Grover.
I would like to thank Mrs. Draper for bringing Lloyd here last night. It was very interesting. He had some really good ideas, really good ideas. And I, I think we should figure out how to do some of the programs that he talked about. And we can build the units just on the outskirts of Chico, and, and we'll, we'll make it happen. I think we should start off on a small scale, just like he suggested, with maybe six units, definitely geared towards veterans, and we, we could pull something like that off right here, right here, right here in town. To give credit where credit is due, Chief Legrown came up with the MLE program, and I think they're doing some, some fabulous work here in town. Not just rousting homeless out, they're, they're giving them information. They're telling them where the programs are. They're giving them options, and they're really, really doing, doing some good work here in Orville. So, hats off to Chief Legrown and, and leadership, because the leadership approved the MLE. So, good job.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I was also at the, the meeting with Lloyd Pendleton in Chico. He wasn't able to attend the one here from a prior engagement, but a lot of good ideas. Our problem here in Orville is a little bit unique in difference to what they face in Utah. We have, I was at a 2020 event here a couple weeks ago that was put on by the Realtors Association and regarding just property in Orville. And Bob Wentz, the president of the, CEO of the hospital in Orville, who brought up the issue that a lot of people who are in Orville on the streets are, need a lot more service than they're currently getting. There's no beds for them on the streets, and so they're not getting the medication or service they need. And so, they kind of just roam the streets, and there's not beds for them in, in the hospital. So, he brought up the need as well for some special housing for them. I know that the issue in regards to that is, from talking to Butte County workers and managers, they said that typically, the government only gives about $1,200 in grants for that, and usually it costs over $2,000. So, as a city, we have to pick up the tab somewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Build them a house, and they will come. But the thing of it is, who's going to pay the bills? I have not seen a homeless person in Orville that has a job. How are they going to pay once they get into the house? Taxpayers going to support them all the way? We can't afford it. City can't afford to support them. The question is, and I like the idea of building them a little house, if they worked, if they took care of it, and if they became an outstanding citizen, then they can stay.
Thank you. Ms. Wilcox.
I want to thank Ms. Draper for getting Mr. Pendleton here. And I attended the conference last night, or Tuesday night, and they have some excellent ideas as to how they reduce the homelessness. And, you know, we can start on a small scale and build them the home. And he also indicated that in order to get into this home, you had to be working, because you would have to be paying the rent. It couldn't be subsidized by, you know, public funds. So, like I said, I, I want to thank, again, Ms. Draper for making that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Goodson.
I have a background in behavioral and mental health. I would utilize my expertise to engage city stakeholders and Butte County service providers to address this issue. Unfortunately, the challenge with many of our homeless population, that specific culture is the inability to assert and advocate for themselves. When a person is incarcerated and or hospitalized, I would encourage... When a person is incarcerated and or hospitalized, I would encourage an intake assessment process that will address an individual's needs, whether that be housing, employment, medication management with assisted living. It will literally take a village of service providers to assist and support each homeless person and get them the help needed to address their individual challenges.
Thank you. Mr. Vang.
Well, for me, I would like to apologize for all of you guys. I'm sorry. In our own culture, we don't have homeless people. Mostly homeless people, what I see is more like people like African-American, Caucasian, Latino, but mostly in living this area. I didn't see that they had that problem, homeless. But to resolve that problem, we need to have a housing counselor to separate the mental health to those who lost their job, and those are need help. They are really need help, and I want to help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to do our closing statements, and I will give the order in which they were chosen from those cards you got. We'll begin with Linda Draper. She got number one.
Okay. I agree with Gandhi that we need to be the change that we want to see in the world. And in Oroville, to do that, we need to change our city council just a bit. And I have to comment on one thing real quickly. One of the statistics that we learned at the meeting on Monday is that 80% of the homeless in Butte County are from Butte County. These are our people, a lot of them that are wandering the streets. So it would help the residents, the businesses, and the homeless if we can get our act together and get something done in the way of housing. But if I'm elected to the city council, I promise that I will work hard, I will read the packet, I will do research and understand what's going on before I show up to a city council meeting and attempt to vote on any issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two is Mark Glover.
Grover.
Grover. Oh. I sound like I'm saying something.
The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting a different result. It's time to try something different. And Oroville, you have a choice. You've got some solid, solid candidates and thinkers up here and some fresh ideas. I like their slogans. I like a lot of the thoughts. And we're fortunate in our town to have this many people trying this hard for, what'd you say the stipend was, $400 a month or something like that? Basically, just pay your gas bill. You know, we're fortunate. We're fortunate to have that. So I humbly ask for your support. I'm going to be something different. I'm going to try to have some business sense. I'm going to try to show some management worth for our firefighters and our police, and we're going to make Oroville a better place.
Thank you. Al Jones here, number three.
All right. Just a quick correction. This is my first time running for any public office, so I'm not on the city council. That's Al Smith over there. So this is my first time running. I am from San Diego, and I come from an area where I've seen what gangs can do. And I moved to Arizona and lived with my grandfather, who was a country boy, who raised cattle and all kinds of other stuff. So I know what it's like to have a change of venues as far as what things look like. I don't want to watch Oroville grow into the next Oakland, the next Sacramento, the next San Diego or anything else. I want Oroville to stay the way it was when I came here, what made me fall in love and want to raise my three children by myself up here. So me on your city council, you're getting a young person who will bring new ideas, who's not afraid to just say, "Hey, you've done that. That don't make sense. It's not going to work anymore. Let's try this." I sit at many tables and many different groups, and I hear a lot of wisdom from the people I sit with. And I cross all borders. When I say all borders, I talk to the people who are the homeless. I walk with them. I sit down and eat with them. And people who are violent criminals and everything else. And I'm not afraid to sit with them, talk to them, and find out what they really need. So I'm the person you need on your city council.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Thompson.
Hey, everybody, for coming out tonight. I do want to kind of point out, I think everybody kind of sees, we have a lot of shared values and goals for Oroville. The difference that I bring to the table is innovation. I have a lot of energy. I'm not afraid of a challenge, and I'm a hard worker for sure. There's a lot at stake that I have at stake for Oroville. I've got two boys. I've got a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. I'm not here in Oroville because it's where I was born, just where I don't know anything different. I moved here from the Bay Area, and I love Oroville. I love what Oroville has, and I plan on investing in this town. And so I'm looking 10 years down the line. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm concerned about where the city's going to be 10 years from now, my kids graduate from high school, whether there's going to be jobs, whether they will even have a choice or decide to stay here. And so vote for me, please. I ask for your support for the next generation that we would see Oroville be a place where businesses and families can thrive once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman.
The last eight years, I've attended at least 192 city council meetings and plus a whole series of other committee meetings and other activities. But what have I got done? What can I say that I was happy to support? And that would be the Affordable Senior Housing Project down on Robinson Street. That's a beautiful project. I was very happy to support that. The rebuilding of the golf course clubhouse, the rebuilding of the airport lobby and the parking area for our airplanes. Very happy to support the schools, safe routes to schools, new sidewalks, new student crosswalks for our student safety. And I did support the annexation of Southside. It's hard, but we're going to do it. We're going to get her done out there. Very happy to see the new fire station coming forward from the Melrose Rouge Public Safety Funding Mechanism out by the airport. That's a separate fund that's not part of our city budget, and finally, we're going to be putting that out there for those people that have been paying for that. I'm happy to represent you, and I'm most happy that so many people call me, and they have my confidence that I'll never report who they were. I will try to represent you and your issues and concerns you have in the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vang.
I'm a small business owner, and I also know how to run business and also know how to balance the budget. And we vote for it diversely and not the person who knows how to balance the budget and run the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Simpson.
We are not requesting the public safety to take a 20% cut in their wages. This is a 20% cut of their budget of the department. And I hope to get that clarified the end of this week when I meet up with some of the staff downtown. Now, that's out of the way. I'm trying to run for the third term. I know people think you're getting too old to run this city, and I don't feel that way. I've been here long enough to know what the city is doing, what it needs, what it's going to do, and I think I can still be a plus for the city of Oroville. My priorities are straight. I think that I go down and talk to the business people to get their opinions, which I value real well. I think that they have some good thoughts down there.
Does that mean stop?
Yes. But thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Goodson.
I am committed to ensuring that public safety departments operate at an optimum level of staffing and response. And I will utilize my background in behavioral and mental health fields to address the homeless issue. I am committed to attracting new business, and I am hoping that that will be inclusive of bolstering our infrastructure with high-speed internet. I have attended every city council meeting over the past year, aside from one. I am a methodical thinker. I will use my business acumen to make data analytical decisions. I will only approve a balanced budget. I hope that you will unite with me to build the safe and prosperous city that we deserve. A vote for Janet Goodson is a vote for new leadership and new ideas.
Thank you. Ms. Bunker.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening. I ask that you allow me to be your voice on the council. I moved here with my family in 1966. My dad worked on the dam. And I have been involved with law enforcement. I went to work for the California State Police in 1982. And I have a lot of love for this city. I believe there's a lot that can be done here. When I ran for council in 2010 and was elected, and at that time, I had been attending council meetings for about a year. So over the last seven years, I've probably missed three council meetings. I refuse to take any of the insurance, any of the stipend, so I saved the city about $30,000 a year. And I feel that I can do a good job as a city council person again, and I hope that you give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least, Ms. Wilcox.
Well, I had made a statement earlier that, you know, I'm basically a lifelong resident. I did leave for a period of time after I graduated from high school for about seven years. And I chose to come back because this is such a wonderful community. I'm in favor of promoting the historical aspect of our community, and also I am pro-business for both new businesses and growing the existing businesses. I know that, you know, some people say, "Well, you know, you've already been on the council for almost eight years, and it's time for a change." But there are still some things that I want to make sure happen in our community. I'm just going to leave it at that, and I hope that you appreciate what has taken place in the last eight years and know that I will continue to make our community prosperous and a community where people will want to come.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank all of the candidates for participating in our forum this evening, and I think now it's time for applause. I want to thank Riza Johnson for being our media participant and the timekeepers. That's extraordinary work. Even watching it is painful. The question sorters and the question gatherers, thank you for being an attentive audience. I think Oroville is a lovely place to come over and talk the issues, so I think this is lovely. I wanted to mention Voters Edge, which is a great place to learn about the candidates. Most of these candidates have put their materials on Voters Edge. This is a League-sponsored website, and it offers every candidate in every race a free place to post their candidacy. So please contact your Butte County Elections Office for more information or visit the California Secretary of State's website. And remember to vote. If you're not voting by mail, remember November 8. Thank you very much.